We will call to order the Citrus Zoning Board of Appeals Thursday, May 15th meeting here in select board hearing room in Town Hall. Citrus Zoning Board of Appeals is committed to providing an environment with respect to their meetings. We ask all members to interact in a polite manner even when there is disagreement with value of participation of our community and want all participants to be marginalized and my minority communities to feel welcome and respected. We ask our community members and all participants to commit to be standing to support and to support our community. As I said, this is being filmed here in the select board hearing room. Participation can be via Zoom. All meetings can be viewed on Citrus Television and Facebook Live. Excuse me, and recorded meetings are available following the contact 1-9-1. With that, we will call the first application of Mr. David Blouse, 619 Washington Street, Nansen, on behalf of student M. Gordon, 135 Washington Side Drive. Citrus requesting special permit finding in accordance with NGL 48, Section 6, and of the bylaws and/or any of the relief of the Board of Appeals and Grant to allow the raise and reconstruction of a garage on a pre-existing non-performing lot located in 135 Washington Side Drive. Name and address for the record, please.
My name is David Blouse, 619 East Washington Street, Nansen.
David Blouse, can you run us through the project?
Alright, what we are proposing to do is raise an existing garage that is in very rough condition. It's been added on to multiple times and it's nice though. And what we would like to do is replace it with reducing the footprint of it from where it is now. Trying to make it a better looking neighborhood.
So this is generally in the same location of the current situation?
In the exact same location, we're reducing right the size of it.
Outside in general, not to be publicized. Okay, so the front yard setback is staying the same. It's currently not performing. The left side setback is conforming, the right side corner lot to the front. And then what you're doing is you're improving the rear yard setback, still technically not performing, but it's an improvement. And the lot is undersized, so the width is good, quantity is good. Am I missing anything?
I can see.
Okay.
And the square footage is a slight reduction in square footage because it's slightly smaller garage. Yeah, we're reducing the depth of it to be right in the capillary.
Terrific. Bob, any comment on this? Anything we're missing? Any things we should look at?
Well, the new construction authority achieves the proposed 8.1 foot rear yard setback.
Yep.
Which is, which is okay for a one-story garage.
It's a one-story garage, correct, so it doesn't really need the 20 foot, right?
Doesn't need the 20 feet if the width is 15 feet or less above it.
Right.
So when you do the detailing of lawns, which are a little sketchy at this point, keep that in mind. You can't make that grid or anything taller than 15 feet. You said it's going to, I think somewhere in here, you're going to raise the floor level a bit to get it above the AD elevation 15 flood zone?
Yes.
Again, you'll have to note that on drawings, they come for a permit, so that we do know what the proposed floor elevation is going to be. And then I don't know if we'll need to, depending on that, talk about perhaps using flood vents in here or a duty elevation certificate. Either way, it's not going to be a review, but that information will have to show up. That's the only thing I can think of.
Okay. Do we have any commentary from the public in the room? Do we have, no, sorry, I see no one holding their hand, which is great. Do I have, see any commentary from the public online on this property?
No, I haven't read it.
Question or comments from the board?
Only comment is that this is an attached garage, not an accessory structure, so we put...
Arguably wouldn't apply, it would still be 20 feet.
Correct.
If it's, well, again.
However, it's pre-existing.
Right.
He's making it better than it was.
I agree.
I will stay with that, but now I don't have the 20 foot lot, the 20 foot.
Right, yeah, okay.
Yeah, I think you're right.
Okay. So technically, it would not be in performance, it would be an improvement on performance. I agree with your point. Alright, you ready to vote? Would you like to make a motion?
I make a motion on the first application of David Blouse for the request for a special permit finding in accordance with NGL Chapter 48, Section 6, and Section 810 on Citrus zoning bylaws, indoor other relief of the Board of Appeals and Grant about the raising and reconstruction of the garage in pre-existing non-performing lot located in 135 Washington Side Drive. Per the plan of Maryland engineer David November 2024, the board finds such raise and rebuild is not created in new non-performing to the extent of existing non-performing such intensification is not substantially more detrimental.
Alright, second, all in favor?
I agree.
You got it. Thank you, sir.
Thank you very much.
Me and Easy Peter, please, are taking into account Bob's comments. Please take into account Bob's comments when you apply to the building. I think that's all.
Thank you very much.
Alright, one down. We will call the second application of Mr. Paul Terrell, 19 Freedom Road, Weymouth, requesting a finding in accordance with NGL Chapter 48, Section 6, Section 810 of the Citrus zoning bylaws and/or any other relief of the Board of Appeals and Grant about the construction of protected use accessory dwelling, ADU on a pre-existing non-performing lot located at 20 Maple Avenue, Citrus, Mass., Port 3066. Sir, name and address for the record, please.
My name is Paul Terrell, next of kin, Massachusetts.
Awesome. This is... Terrell, quickly run us through the proposed project.
I'm proposing a protected ADU under 900 square feet within property of 20 Maple Ave. The project is going to be building a home, all corners have been addressed, buildings, I don't recite my approval, I see the public's approval there. I'm requesting a review, all setback requirements consistent with state law.
Yeah, I just, for clarity purposes, the, it's going to meet the left, right, and rear setback requirements according to the statute, and the front setbacks is done under the average.
Yes.
Okay, just so we're clear on it, it's one of the papers, it's not on the form, but it's, I think, we can get it placed, that's fine. For us, a lot area here is slightly undersized, and the existing house does not need setbacks, and ADU meets all setbacks. Okay. Bob, comment on project?
Not really, no. You know, as you go along, it's the first ADU that's coming before the board under the check status.
Right.
And you get some counsel as to whether it needs to come before the board at all.
Right.
But the opinion was that it all has a limited scope to what the board.
Right, so there is a review that we can do, that our scope of review is limited.
That's true.
Right. And they felt more comfortable having us do the review, I mean, with appropriate finding. We will open it up to public commentary. For those of you who are not familiar with this, mass.gov has a beautiful website on what the ADUs are and what the ADU law is and what towns are permitted and not permitted to do. So I reference that to you. We have received commentary on this project, opposing it, to be honest, for reasons that the municipality cannot regulate. So I just wanted to throw that out there before we open this up to public commentary. We do have the ability for site time review. Sir, I did have one question, Title V. Sorry, town, so your answer, right, that answers that question, yes. Alright, so what we can do is site time review, Title V requirements, dimensional setbacks, this we saw the dimensional setbacks, but height of structure, and then restrictions on certain...
If I could, one comment, receive your site time review was concerned about parking, the current use is a little disorganized, the parking is a little haphazard. Most projects actually remedies that by parking for the existing structure as well as protected use ADU and by parking in front of the surface, so the parking will be vastly improved over current conditions.
And again, our ability to regulate the parking is highly limited because we cannot require more than one parking space for an ADU located outside half a mile from a community renovation property. This is, so, and we cannot require any parking for an ADU located within 25 miles of the renovation. So on that, I will open this up for public commentary. I'll ask whoever, yes, please stand up, name and address for the record.
My name is Deborah Gamm, 17 Maple Avenue, Citrus. Thank you for your time and consideration, and your service to Town of Citrus. Thank you all. I'm here to address the proposed ADU building at 20 Maple Avenue, Citrus. And I would like to say to avoid any of some of the standing confusion of the facts on my part, I want to say that our neighborhood is an older established, R3 residential neighborhood just off Hallow Road, which is kind of up the main street of Citrus, and is heavily traveled, especially in the summer. The lot size required to build a single family home is 10,000 square feet. However, there are older homes that were built to non-performing standards, one of which is at 20 Maple Ave. It is a two-family structure built on an 8,400 square foot lot. Front of the building is less than 16 from the street. The bottom floor has two bedrooms, second floor has three bedrooms. Collectively, the tenants own five cars, which are parked on the property across the front. Five cars take up a lot of room. I have to look out at them every day. In our neighborhood, every building lot is vacant. It leaves no more room for buildings or vehicles. The proposed ADU structure will have three vehicle bays on the bottom floor, one I understand is for both storage. The second floor will be a two-bedroom apartment. I don't see how a vehicle will be able to move freely from the garage to the street without being blocked in, and I'm very concerned that this could be a safety issue. I realize that Citrus is taking steps in response to the recent state mandate on ADUs. I am asking the town to be thoughtful to its residents and act to maintain some sort of local control over this type of building. It will crowd our neighborhoods in buildings, people, cars, and noise, and ruin the character of Citrus and our neighborhood. These reasons, I am not in favor of this project moving forward, and I thank you very much.
Thank you. Again, whoever has commentary, I think it's very passionate enough, I appreciate it. These comments are also can be effective if they are communicated to your state representatives and state senators.
I've already told them.
Because they require fundamental changes to the nature of state regulation, so thank you. Next person?
Daniel Martin, Penn Avenue, Smart. I think this is a terrible idea. I think it's a very small lot to basically try and jam three families into, which would make for a very unsafe circumstance. Does that benefit the neighborhood, the town? And if you need to vote on a variance, I would say turn it down, it's not contributing, it's just a net loss.
Alright, do we have any other commentary in the room?
I do, I'm sure I asked for the 15, my God.
Thank you.
It's difficult enough now for a reminder night out on 2 Maple Ave, when you've got cars in front of that house, parking along in front of the street, the street's not that wide. Just don't use a phone parking, there is no people, there's no driveway, it's wide. There is no driveway. So the poor reminder night out, you have three cars, what's it going to be when we use a two-bedroom apartment or more, where they go out, the street's annoying, blocked away? It's not good.
Thank you. Do we have anybody online?
No, I haven't raised.
Again, I will make one more comment. So I appreciate everything that the community has said here. I also want to remind you what I said earlier, that what our ability to regulate and prevent ADUs, especially this type of ADU in our community is limited by state sanctioned regulation. So if you would like us to have the flexibility to do those, to make the kinds of decisions that you would like us to make in this case, you will need to convince your representatives and state senators, our representative state senator, to alter, you know, state's statute and regulation. Alright, with that...
Yeah, we have a couple other comments.
Alright, well, one more round of comments, and then I'm going to close the public commentary because we're getting very repetitive.
No, to be honest, 17 Maple Avenue.
Sir.
This ADU, I take it it was meant for owners, people that own the property that are going to live on it.
That is actually incorrect, sir. This type of ADU is not specifically, does not require the owner of the property to live on it.
Other words, you say, say a landlord and do it.
That is, as it is currently written, sir?
This is actually, to me, all this is like a money grant. Wants to build in your hands, he's going to get rentals in there, you know what rentals are, two or three grand a month, yeah? And that is.
Alright. That may or may not be true, sir. All I'm telling you is what this, what we have been told, how the statute reads, I read the statute and the regulations, same as we're going to do and our company does.
My wife has spoken to the representative committee, and he, he wants to change this whole thing.
Terrific, and we will enforce whatever regulation the state puts in front of us.
Is there any proposed bill for you coming?
Again, if it gets passed into law, we will enforce it, it is passed into law. Yes, ma'am?
What?
Name and address for it one more time, just...
Susan Wilson, I can name it.
Yes, ma'am.
I'm wondering what kinds of considerations would be?
I will, I will, I will turn you, I read them earlier, I will turn you to the mass.gov website.
As soon as...
They, that's what they talk about, right? So if this was dimensionally inappropriate, if it violated any of the set offs, or, for example, it did not meet Title V, this is on town store, so that's not an issue, right? We could regulate that, right? The issues that you are raising, we are unable to regulate.
So concerned about, you know, the neighborhood and any kind of...
No.
So with the representative, he submitted house 420, and he's seeking to be a state seal record?
It's irrelevant what he has submitted. I'm very much, your points are very well taken. Until the law and the regulations change, we cannot do anything, right? We are, our ability is limited, we are going to operate within that ability. I appreciate what you, what you're saying. I appreciate that this will have a direct impact on you, alright? There's only so much we can do.
Can you potentially wait until this bill has been made up? So what happens if bill passes and this construction project's underway?
Then it's grandfathered. If it's under, if it's under the new bill, well, it's the same as any house that was built on a lot here that is under 10,000 square feet. It could not be moved today, but it is grandfathered in. Would you, would you want if somebody wanted to live in that house or us to bulldoze it? Because it's quite a non-performing lot.
I'm just pointing out.
No, no, I understand, but that's the reality of how this works, right?
So you said, you did mention that the lot size was smaller than was really expected.
Yes, that's not a consideration in this particular, no, it is not specifically not a consideration.
Hands are tied.
Yes, ma'am, they are.
The state has taken away the towns to regulate a lot of this, right?
Right, and that's, that's what we're trying to communicate to you, that we have very few things that we can, we can make decisions about. If they meet those criteria, right, this falls under that provision, and we would like to do it.
That's all.
Alright, with that, I move we close the public commentary.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Alright. You guys are discussing on the board level, or are you guys ready to vote on this?
I'm ready.
Want to make a motion?
I make a motion on the second application of Paul Terrell, requesting a finding in accordance with NGL Chapter 48, Section 6, and Section 810 of Citrus zoning bylaws, indoor other relief of the Board of Appeals and Grant about the construction protected use accessory dwelling unit, pre-existing non-performing lot located at 20 Maple Ave. For the plan of greater Boston survey and engineering, dated February 1, 2024, the board provides that such...
Applies?
Yeah, applies with the statute in this.
And the relevant regulations, and that this project is a gamble. I second. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, sir. Sorry, folks.
Sir, I'm questioning whether or not there is an appeal here, can I go to construction tomorrow, please?
That is a good question.
That's a great question.
That's a, we don't know, I don't know the answer to that, yes.
This is supposed to be a bylaw.
Yes, I understand, I think that's, Elizabeth, can you shoot a note to town council tomorrow morning? And see if there's, I am not, I read the regulations, I did not see anything regarding that. Well, of course, there's, there's an appeal period for our special permit for findings.
I'd just like to make sure, but I don't want to...
I understand, and I appreciate that, and I think we'll shoot a note to town council.
Who wants to?
I...
It's all they want, sure.
It's still, it's still a decision of the board.
And there'd be a writ decision. Will there be a writ decision?
Supposed to be.
So I would guess then probably there's a writ decision, and there's probably an appeal period, but I agree, I don't...
So, well, if you could, my understanding is...
I can...
My understanding is that it's a bylaw, so if it's a bylaw, we should...
You're still building on the setback, you still need to find your decision because you're building on the setback.
So, if we could, I mean, I don't want to create these...
We're going to shoot, you're going to shoot a note.
...that's not conforming, and under the state law, it's, the state law says that...
So, we're going to shoot it out to town council, and they'll let us know if they believe, right? Because again, if somebody appeals it, right, what's going to happen? It's, they can file the appeal, you could go, right, at risk if there's an appeal filed, like, do whatever you want. And either that appeal will get dismissed, right, or, or it will get heard, right? So we don't control the appeal, right, if there is one.
No, you'll get the free legal advice of title against you.
I would like to let you know what they tell us, but it's a very, I appreciate you, right?
I appreciate you, man.
Alright, yeah, yeah. Alright, and then our final application of the evening, 133, I have my... There we go. Third application of Ms. Jennifer Smith, 1026 Frankworth Street, Duxbury, on behalf of Mark Chalmers, 133 Maple Street, requesting a special permit finding in accordance with NGL 48, Section 6, and Section 10 of Citrus zoning bylaws, and/or any of relief of the Board of Appeals and Grant about the construction of an addition to a pre-existing non-performing dwelling lot located in 133 Maple Street, Citrus. Do we have somebody for this project, I would assume, online?
Yes, Jennifer Smith.
Ms. Smith, how are you?
I'm great, thank you. How are you?
Okay. Can you run us through this project?
Yes, so we, we have a home, a garage that was built before 1950s. It was on the lot before the home, and then there's a breezeway built in between. So we are proposing to take the breezeway out, which is currently at the elevation of the garage, and it's about three feet below the actual house, and we're building a new addition, a little over 900 square feet, bringing the breezeway back up to the house, and the rest of the addition will all be at the main house level. And like I said, it's about 954 square feet exactly. It's going to be a great room, expanding the kitchen, adding a gym and an office bedroom as well.
Right, so it's a 954 square foot addition to the existing, right, so you're, you're a little over 3,000 square feet for the final, final house.
Exactly.
Okay, so that's fine, so, and you're basically building out the rear of the house, right? You're not changing, so left and right side setbacks are not forming, the rear is conforming. You're basically building out of the rear of the house. Lot is about half size for the zone, and the width is slightly, written in front, you're slightly smaller, okay?
Yes, yep.
Alright, Bob, comments on this? You're going to have a little bit of discussion back and forth.
Well, dimensionally, you've, you've touched the bases. If there is a bedroom matter, I haven't seen it in real time, but that could be something you think up for the board itself in terms of setting system capacity. The conservation commission will have to weigh in on this project because it is where the wetlands setback area.
Yeah.
The additional piece of information is the dark line, dashed line in the south of the property indicating a one-foot setback to the internet street. And I met on the board earlier today about that situation, there's no way to tell unless you want to do a digest whether or not that street might eventually, or water that ran in that channel, might eventually end up in top waters. Crack factory bar, well, first, I would work for them in the tap that. If that were the case, then the setback, the no disturbed zone from that stream would be 150 feet. I believe it's Section 520 of the bylaws. On the other hand, you've got a situation here where if you take 150 foot offset, or another 50 feet, you have that dark dash bar.
That includes the house, right?
It includes the house and most of the lot, includes the setbacks, right, by, pretty much most of the lot.
Right.
So that, that leads to the conclusion that all of this development took place prior to the implementation of that regulation, or else it wouldn't have been allowed to take place. Given that, I would view that situation as just another pre-existing non-performing similar to, or at least in the same general category, is the dimensional non-performing. And seemingly the, or has the power to rent relief from that non-performing as, as it does for the dimensional non-performing.
I have understood, right, and that's, it is sort of, as we like to say, it is what it is, right, the property that we find it.
I also was going to go back to a case in 2019, 21, 2021.
2021, yeah.
That I attached, and I think it was a very similar situation.
Yeah, I think where I'm, where this, for me, a couple people may, I'm going to throw it out there, then we'll take the comments from anybody that might be interested online, I don't know if there is one on the project, which is, you know, what I think I would like to say, and I'm speaking just to the board, is under 520.5, that specifically, right? We have some, some regulations that deal with these types of situations, and really kind of help us understand what the groundwater situation... um uh what the groundwater situation is like, what the impervious area is like, what does the recharge look like? Um is there gonna be greater interference, et cetera, to help mitigate some of the impacts that we see when you are um in a wetlands. Right, so so like Bob said, this will have to go to conservation committee. Um but uh usually we end up uh opining or approving those kinds of mitigation measures, right? And what I, what I don't see here is any mitigation measures to deal with the fact that this is either in a hundred foot right, uh so or maybe even a hundred and fifty foot. So if you did, uh with the income stream making worse. Uh so I just throw that out there. It's general, general commentary. Uh was there anybody online? And and I'll I'll turn back to the African in a second, but anybody online that has any commentary as well?
No reason, yes.
Okay, I mean, we have conservations uh and county planning commentary office, uh because that's their sort of main concern. Uh. Board, thoughts, comments at this point in time? I will then turn it back over to the African, who may have some some comments.
Um I I agree with your analysis, George.
Yeah.
Uh I can, uh the only, my only concern is the fact that you know, we're getting comments from planning and Bob, they have and I haven't had time to dig into this to poke out, to wrap my head around it. So I don't know where I am with it right now.
Okay, and that's, that's fair.
I have, yeah, I haven't had enough time to take it for this.
Correct. Um. Ms. Smith?
Yes, sir.
Um. Have you guys thought about these issues? Cause it's not on the plan that we have, right? And and I understand the project, project seems very reasonable, we're this project not um in a a buffer zone or in wetlands, et cetera. Uh it'd be a no container, right? Uh do we have, do we have any thoughts, were there any thoughts or plans around dealing with this kind of situation? Or are there any existing mitigation measures on the property, right, that might help address this?
Um I'm wondering if you're referring to the percentage of impervious, um do you have the updated plot plan?
Uh I I have an updated plot plan uh in impervious area, so we have existing thirty two or thirty three square feet, which is fifteen to four ninety percent of the lot. And then the proposal is that's gonna be increased to uh twenty percent, a little over twenty percent, right?
Uh which, which now we go from something that
is on the wrong side of five point two and a half, uh five twenty five point and a half. Five twenty point five F. Um to something that is even further on the wrong side of five twenty five F, right? So if you look at that, right, no one than fifty percent of the area of two thousand five hundred square feet, whichever is greater. So we're at forty, we want hundred sixty seven square feet and twenty point seven a lot, uh relative impervious, right? Unless a stormwater management and artificial research and precipitation is developed. So 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 we have problem, I don't know if problem's the right word, so we have, we have an issue there, right? Cause this is gonna go to conservation, they're gonna look at these numbers, they're gonna say, no, thank you. Uh and we're gonna have a problem, if you will, kind of dealing with that. Uh because, right, construction is fine, setups are fine, the zoning standpoint's fine, but we reinforce all the bylaws, right? Um and we're in a, we're we're in a situation where um towns are kind of adamant about this and 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 is making it clear that uh there may be even bigger issues than we are sure of, uh and there seems to be no mitigation. So I am talking about that, and uh that's sort of my concern.
Yeah, um yeah, this twenty percent is something that has kind of um been a newer thing, obstacle here. Um I don't know if reducing the.
Yeah, so let me, let me make, let me make a suggestion.
Sure.
All right, and you can take this anywhere you want, uh you you can either follow us or not. Um we seem to have sort of a, and and again, thank you for the update, cause the update actually crystallizes the, I think, the issue that we're struggling with. Right, so those are the questions. May I suggest? And this will be, the only, if you want this, we continue this to either the next meeting or the following meeting, right? And and up to you, to give you enough time to contemplate the potential for a stormwater management. Right, because the impervious area is increasing and it's increasing, uh it it was already significant because of relatively small lot, relative. Um and it's getting worse. Uh to consider that um in light of our five twenty point five F, it will also give the board members sufficient time to contemplate the issue. And you know, if you can send send us some kind of proposal, either a redesign, I'm not suggesting that. Or a stormwater management plan, I'm not suggesting that either, it goes up to you. Um that might help us uh feel better about the project from that standpoint and arguably will help conservation commission in their thinking about this.
Yes, um a- actually, um we did, um we were told by conservation recently that it's possible that we would need a stormwater. Um so I have the engineer who's already priced that and ready to go, we just weren't sure if that was something that was gonna be required. Um we can easily get that for you.
So would you like to continue till, how many we have been for and to the June meeting? Is it booked or?
Uh we have three, four, excuse me, four at the moment.
So do you wanna continue this, so you can send us some updates for until the June twenty?
Six.
Twenty six meeting, or? Yeah, or the July meeting?
We're closed down.
With June meeting, that's why I was gonna say, if we move it later. I I I'm still, I'm still in town for that, so that's all.
Yeah, um. I could say that, yeah, just to to say, um we had planned on starting in May, not realizing all of these, so it's like we have materials and crew, I'm wondering, I know that we have another hearing that's set up with the conservation. I thought that that was to to discuss the actual stormwater or that level. Is it possible to finish this here, knowing that we're doing the stormwater?
No, we we have to see, we we have to see the whole thing in order to grant the special permit. So when does your meeting with CONCOM?
Um we don't know, because we've been waiting to find out if that um
Okay.
The engineers in the process of filling out the application to the intent.
So may I suggest that you ask us to uh continue this meeting to the June twenty sixth meeting? If you can get to CONCOM before that and negotiate with them, right? Can come to us with an updated plan with a, let's say, a mitigation plan, right?
Yep.
Then we can hear it sort of immediately thereafter at the June meeting, right? If it doesn't happen, you can ask for a further continuance, and we can go to the July, go to the July meeting i- if CONCOM is delayed, let's say, right? So let's put him on for the June, is that what you would like?
If that's our only solution to wait, um I hate to be delaying this anymore, can I ask one last question?
Sure.
This twenty point seven percent, it's such a slight little percentage. How much of the actual, how much of the actual square footage would we have to reduce to meet that? Is that even a figure, cause?
It it's not a twenty percent issue, it's a fifteen percent issue, you went from fifteen percent to twenty percent.
You're already over.
You're already over.
Okay, cause I thought, I thought twenty percent was the number I've been hearing that we can't go over by conservation.
I I'm telling, I'm just, I think, why don't you have your engineer take a look at the bylaw? Five twenty five F and take a look at that and see how best they think they can comply with 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 that and provide a mitigation measure, okay?
The number you're looking for is fifteen percent.
Right.
It'll bring it fifteen percent impervious area.
Right, so I I don't know where the the twenty, what other provision you're looking at for the twenty percent. So that's what I'm saying, look at five twenty five point F, talk to conservation, negotiate with them, and then you can bring us the project. And again, we don't, I I I don't see any other issues, that is the main issue that I see here. The setbacks, et cetera, seem reasonable to me in light of what we, the pre-existing conditions. Uh I think if we can resolve that to the boards and arguably if you can resolve it to CONCOM's uh uh satisfaction, um we can, we can get, we can get to uh to this, right?
Okay.
All right, so uh I'll move at your request, that's what I'm hearing, I'll move that we uh continue this to the June meeting.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, thank you very much.
Okay.
We'll see you in June.
All right.
Um Elizabeth?
Yes, sir.
We have two things for approval, we have the minutes.
Yes.
Two sets of minutes to approve, what were the dates again? I read them, they look at it.
They are for the January sixteen, twenty twenty five, and March twenty 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 five.
I make a motion when we put the January, March twenty twenty five meeting minutes.
I second. All in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous, any other?
Nothing, nothing to remind us all that we're on June sixteen, twenty sixth because of being close to the.
Shoot game.
Make a motion when we close the meeting.
I second, all in favor?
Uh.
Aye.